Good evening, ladies and gentlemen. It's my honor and privilege as Mayor of the City of Vator to officially call this a special Vator City Council meeting to order on this January 11th, 2018 at 6:01 PM. And we would like our city clerk to now begin to the roll call. I would like you to do that.
Judy Costello.
Present.
Jason Daley.
Here.
Joe Schei.
Here.
We have lots of Js. Sorry. Mike Parsons.
Here.
Leona Sander Hunter.
Here.
Hunter Sander.
Sander Hunter.
Sander Hunter. I don't know why I do that every time. And Mayor Smith.
Also present. Well, we obviously have a forum, and I feel it is time to be appropriate to extend congratulations, not condolences, to all of you who have been duly elected and sworn in officially prior to tonight's meeting. But we're grateful to each of you for your willingness to serve as elected officials in the wonderful Code City of Vator. And I'd also like to acknowledge the presence of Bobby Jackson, a member of the county commissioners, and we're grateful to have you with us. And also, we have with us Detective Sergeant Engelbrechtson from the Lewis County Sheriff's Department, who's representing them at our meetings each, every other week. And the rest of you as well, because we are now in 2018, and I'm very confident it's going to be a wonderful year for the City of Vator. And with that, all having been said, now let's proceed with our pledge of allegiance. We invite all to please rise. And Jason, you.
I pledge allegiance to the fire of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay. With that, we'll proceed with our agenda for this evening. Our first item of business is the swearing-in of city council members. As I mentioned earlier, they were all sworn in by our city clerk. So the appropriate signatures on their certificates and other official documentation has already been done. But from a historical perspective, we thought that it would be appropriate for residents of Vator to observe the swearing-in conducted by the mayor. We will photograph that event for the City of Vator history, unless the city council members are camera shy and they don't want to repeat the process. If nobody objects to it, we'll proceed with that.
I didn't really dress for it.
I didn't really dress for it.
And I feel the same way. I'm okay with it.
Do you?
Okay.
I'm wearing my favorite well.
All right.
So let's get the only outfit.
Yeah.
Jason, you're making dapper tonight.
I was going for dapper, actually. No, I'm good without any being worn.
Okay, then I anticipated that might happen.
You guys are just camera shy.
Okay, then with that, we'll proceed to the mayor's report. To note that we had scheduled during this portion of our city council meeting an official presentation to Diane Floyd. We've made arrangements to give her a special recognition in the form of a plaque, and we weren't able to get it prior to this meeting, unfortunately. So we've informed her of that development, and she will be with us at our next city council meeting. So now with regard to the second item on the mayor's report, I wanted to bring the council members up to speed with regard to certain elements of our code enforcement ordinance, which I know that you're well aware of, as I treated some motions within the residents of the community, particularly those who received notices of violation. Understandably, there's been some pushback from the residents, which you're all keenly aware of. I just felt like, however, that you should also be aware that there are individuals who are engaging in a pretty concerted public records request effort. And our city attorneys' interpretation of those records requests are that they might be building a case for a class action lawsuit against the city. And we've got the latest records request arrived January 8th, and they're requesting some records that pertain to the ordinance. And I would invite the council members to look at that latest public records request so that you're not caught off guard and off balance. And we could give you our more specific and detailed interpretation of what we think they may be angling towards. So I just want you to be aware of that. But feedback that we're getting from our city attorney, who's a little aware and able to interpret their potential efforts, is on top of it, and she's providing, which you'll see at our next council meeting, responses to this potential effort. So I am very comfortable and confident that regardless of what may be emerging, that we are in a position of strength legally sound, particularly if we engage in the recommendations that she's submitting. I kept to this and to that.
I think so.
So we're aggressively plugged into this. We're not caught off guard. And that. I did want to also mention that we got an invitation from the Western Washington Transportation Board, representing Calix County and Waukeaham Counties. They would like to have a representative from the City of Vator participate on that board. And they need a response from the city before January 19th. So if anybody might be willing to participate on that, you'd have some influence on transportation plans that might impact the City of Vator and the rest of it. Kevin Flynn used to represent the community on that board.
What place is the location of this board?
They lead in Longview.
That's a long view. Most of the time.
Yeah, most of the time. But we can give you more information after the council meeting. So that would conclude the comments that I have. So we'll proceed with any reports from the members of the council. Yes, I do.
I would just like to start out by saying thank you to everyone who put their confidence in me to sit on this side of the table, and I'm looking forward to working with all of my fellow council people for 2018 and three more years ahead.
Fantastic. Now, welcome aboard.
Thank you.
I've just been hearing a lot of disappointment with the progress of the school grounds. That's something that people in the community have been commenting a lot to me about, you know, they've been kicked to the sewer, but there's still a great big hole in the middle of things, and there's no progress, so.
Yeah, I can inform you that when we get to item number three, I think we can, if you don't mind waiting until we get there, provide some interesting response to that. Okay. Any other council commentary? Okay. Let's proceed with the approval of this evening's agenda. I know that Judy, you had something you'd like to add, and now would be the time to do that.
Okay, I would like to add May Day.
Item number five.
Item number five, please.
By adding it, at this time, we can't make any decisions, but you can ask these for information. Okay? So we need to hear that in form of a motion.
You can do it all together as one, just approve the agenda, adding item.
All right, I'll make a motion to approve the city council meeting agenda for 1/11/2018 and adding item number five, May Day.
Okay. For the motion submitted by Mrs. Costello to approve the agenda as written with the addition of item number five, a discussion on the May Day celebration. Do we have a second?
I'll second that.
Seconded by Mr. Daley. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Are there any opposed? Motion is carried. Very good. Next, minutes approval from our last city council and public hearing.
I'll make a motion to approve the city council meeting and public hearing minutes from 12/14/2017.
Okay. Mr. Parsons has submitted a motion to approve those minutes as written. Do we have a second?
I'll second.
Seconded by Mrs. Hunter Simmons.
Sander Hunter. Leona.
All right, Leona. Business, thanks. Okay. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Are there any opposed? Voucher approvals. Note some modifications.
I'll make a motion to approve the vouchers. First half of December 2017, $25,357.98. End of December 2017, $18,500.
No.
Excuse me. $19,394.45 for a December 2017 total of $44,752.43.
Okay. The motion submitted by Mr. Schei to approve those voucher expenditures in the amounts noted. Do we have a second?
I'll second.
Seconded by Mrs. Costello. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion is carried. Special reports. We were approached by Detective Engelbrechtson and indicated that this was his first time here, and I'm with Deputy Chisman. But so he wasn't aware that there would be a report for this evening, so we've just decided to make the executive decision. We pass out the reports that have been prepared for us, but we will give Detective Engelbrechtson a reprieve from tonight's conference.
There are copies here for the public.
We want improv.
Yeah.
There are copies here available for the public if anybody wants copies of those reports.
We express appreciation to the county sheriff's department for the law enforcement services that they render to us. Obviously, we've had some notoriety in the last 30 days, but it's as disappointing as it is to discern the criminal enterprise that was engaged and involved in our city. Nonetheless, it's a success, and they're now not functioning as an enterprise in our community. So thank you.
I would like to request that we have the park board and the planning board committee do a special report at least once a month so we can hear what is going on. Is that something that we could have launched?
What launch? With their calendar. They came last night and spoke for picking up the baskets or something.
Oh, the Lions Club?
Lions Club, yes.
Well, the Lions Club is not a public entity, but park board and planning committee are.
True, but just for their agenda, just so that we know what's going on in the town itself.
That would come under, sure, but hey, the council's prerogative, so don't want to dictate it all. Yeah, normally, those two boards, planning committee and park board, have given support.
They have. We haven't heard from them for about a year.
It is in the ordinances that it states that they are supposed to do that on a regular basis. We've kind of been lax with that, so I think if we just remind them that they're supposed to do that.
I don't think there would be any objection to it, so we'll pursue that. I'm sure that we call up on that.
Perfect, thank you.
Okay. With that, let's proceed with our public comment.
We have two people. We have Doug Williams, Mr. First.
Douglas Williams, 626 G Street. This is concerning the preschool. The Low Falls Masonic Lodge allocated $250 for supplies for the school that was supposed to open in September, October, November, December. It is still not open due to utility issues. To speed the opening, the mayor could have postponed the payment of the fees until the school district paid the fees. The mayor did nothing to help facilitate the opening of the school. The school district did not earmark funds for known fees and had checks ready. As a result, the Low Falls Masonic Lodge will donate the supplies to another school in the area if the school is not open by the January meeting of the lodge. I'm sorry to say that, but the person holding the supplies is tired of looking at them.
I would love to provide a recent response to that commentary, but it's not appropriate in public comment.
I think it is.
Will it be on number three? Will it come up under item number three?
I could add to that, yes. I would definitely respond.
Jason's going to talk about the school.
Yep.
Under number three?
Yes.
Good.
That would be an appropriate form. Okay, next.
Next is Bobby Jackson.
Mr. Mayor, I think that I may have made a mistake on my calendar. We were going to come tonight and talk to you, give you a presentation on countywide transit, but I noticed that it's not on the agenda, so I may have messed up something on my calendar, so I'd like to come back at another time.
Okay.
To make a presentation to you if I can.
Absolutely.
Also, possibly bring with me our new executive director of Twin Transit, who landed at the shop on Monday.
Really?
His name is Derek Wojr Demers, and it's going to take me a while to figure out how to pronounce that name, but we're very excited about having him, and we want to come and just make a presentation to the city council and to the citizens of Vator about some of the thought processes moving forward about countywide transit. So we'll make an effort. I'll have Candy contact you about scheduling that specifically, okay?
We'll be happy to have you.
Thank you so much.
Look forward to your return.
Thank you.
Thank you so much for your effort. Okay, then that concludes public comment. We'll proceed with our city business. You'll note that item number one is council consideration of the recommendation to fill our deputy clerk's position. Call your attention to the letter that I've prepared for your review.
Is there another copy of that, Mike?
Yes, I do. I'll give you a copy.
Thank you.
Okay, I'd like to go ahead and just read that letter, if you don't mind, and we'll handle it as we proceed. Dear Vator City Council members, as you are all aware, our deputy clerk, Diane Floyd, officially resigned effective December 28th, 2017. In anticipation of her departure, we began to actively seek a qualified replacement to fill that important position. I'm pleased to report that after appropriate advertising for the position, we received 13 applications from individuals throughout Western Washington. These recommendations were carefully reviewed by an informal committee approved by the council, composed of myself, Jill Nielsen, the city clerk, and the city council member Leona Sander Hunter.
Yes, it is backwards here. Leona's good.
Which the council was made aware of at our last council meeting. So after the applications were reviewed by the committee, four candidates were carefully selected for interview. These four interviews took place on Wednesday, January 4th, 2018. Following those interviews, I'm pleased to report that pursuant to responsibilities I have as mayor, and in consultation with the other members of our committee, I have selected from the group of four interviewees the individual who I believe is best qualified to serve as our new deputy clerk. The position of that person is Denise Colby, and Denise is with us this evening. I was going to attach a copy of her application. I'm improvising here, review, review, but then I figured that some of the information in it might be sensitive, so I felt better not to. But I have a copy of it, and you're able to look at it at your leisure. However, I'll continue. She is currently employed as the administrative assistant to the city manager of the city of Chehalis. She has had over 15 years of administrative experience, primarily with the city of Tomwater Fire Department. I have found Mrs. Colby to be intelligent, experienced, well-spoken, personable, and knowledgeable in the intricacies of city administration. She works well with people, and I believe she will be a valuable addition to our city staff as deputy clerk. To that end, I am pleased to submit her name to you for your consideration in your inflammatory vote. Sincerely yours, Kennedy Smith, Mayor of Vator. So, and I can add that I did contact her references, and they gave low and support to this job prospect. So that's my counsel to you, and as is normally the case, the council will act on that recommendation. If you'd like to hear from Denise Colby.
I'm not going to put her on the spot like that. I didn't share that part.
She's really good at talking to people, so I think.
With preparation. He's correct. All of those things he said, I have worked in city government for multiple years for two different cities, beginning with the city of Tomwater and the fire department, and then ending with the city of Chehalis, administrative assistant to the city manager Jill Anderson. So I have quite of an extensive background with city government. The ins and outs, public records, I did a lot of accounting for the fire department, so I think it's just a really good fit for the things that I've done, so.
So with that, I would wave to council action.
May I ask one more question? Do you reside in Chehalis?
I reside in the county.
Okay.
Between Onalaska and Naperville.
Okay, that's nice.
It's about the same distance from my house to City Hall in Chehalis as it is from my house to City Hall in Vator, yeah.
Mayor, you have an excellent track record for picking city staff, so.
Thank you.
I trust your opinion.
Okay.
And Leona was there too, so I'm.
Jared, can I type in? Any comment?
I thought she was very, very qualified for the position. Very qualified for the position. And she does speak very clearly, and I think she'll do a great job.
Okay. Well, then with the wave of council action.
Do we need to make a motion? I would like to make a motion that, shall I wing this?
Sure.
Okay, I'd like to make a motion that the mayor proceed to present the position to Denise Colby at his earliest convenience.
All right, thank you.
You're welcome.
I heard the motion submitted by Mrs. Costello to authorize the mayor to proceed with extending an official offer of employment to serve as a deputy clerk in the City of Vator. So I will, do we have any additional commentary?
Need a second? I'll second that.
Well, absent any additional commentary, seconded by Mr. Parsons. So with that, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Are there any opposed?
Extra long wait, just to be sure.
Suspenseful.
This is like a reality show.
Then with that, a round of applause. Welcome aboard, and we'll be in touch. So thank you for being here.
Oh, you're welcome. Thank you all very much.
Well, excellent. Well done. I'm very excited. Item number two, council to consider ordinance 01-2018, sewer rate amended. Call your attention to the paperwork that you have.
I'm sorry, I'm just mumbling because I realize my numbers are backwards on the agenda. If you read anything about the ordinance or resolution numbers, read it off of this sheet. Read off the agenda, it's backwards. Sorry.
Year first.
Yeah, year first, then number first, then year. Yeah, I got them wrong on the agenda, and anyways, I'm sorry.
One of the minor questions I had about this is that it's going to take place for the month of December and January. Is there any way to break that up so that it is, the month of December doesn't have the $4 on it, and only the month of January? And then when the next billing is in March, then it would be the full on board? Or is that too much bookkeeping, or?
I have no idea if we can do that or not. We've always done it this way, where it rolls over from last year to December. Yeah. Yeah. I don't know if the accounting program has the ability to do that or not. I don't, never asked. Typically do this of the first billing cycle, which is December and January. And this brings the monthly rate to $72. Is anyone going to hear that? So no silence out there? The rate will be $72 increase.
This is something that we have been talking about for the last several years, because we've been increasing it $2 this year and a couple dollars a year so that we can take off the brunt of this big sewer project for the next year. This is something we've been talking about for a long time, so this is kind of a no-brainer for me, unfortunately, but I'd rather have a $4 increase today or this year than rather than a $27 increase when it, you know, take the brunt of it off. So it's standing. So I would like to approve the ordinance to adopt the 2018 sewer rate schedule as written.
Well done that you've submitted a motion to approve ordinance 2018-01 as written. So do we have any council commentary? Wait, can you second first?
I'll second that. Second would be a chart on how these are going to go.
Yeah, that's great. We could prepare each other.
How they're going to go over the next several years. You mean, if you look at your sewer projections that are adopted as part of your budget, that's where these numbers come from, and it's in there.
Okay, thank you.
I mean, just estimates, but yeah.
Yeah. And so you heard the motion, you may have a second. Seconded by Mr. First. Commentary, your thoughts? Are there none? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Are there any opposed? There's none, so thank you for that decisive action, painful as it is. Okay. Next, item number three. Council to consider resolution 2018- Council to consider resolution twenty eighteen dash zero one, building official contract extension. As you're well aware, building officials' contract comes up for extension on a annual basis. And so, we need to have the services available, so I'm going to recommend that we proceed with that action. But I wanted to add that there has been some concern raised by individuals who have had association with the building official. And of course, we work closely with him, the mayor and the city clerk. And I candidly report and inform the council that for the past couple of months, his service has been spotty at best. And it has contributed to the delay in some of the permits that have been taken out by residents of our community. And we could get into specifics of that, but I don't think any, at this moment in time, would warrant us not extending his service contract. But I would give you my candid observation that it may be wise for us, we're working with him. And he does respond after we have to put some pressure on him. But some of his reports are, are. Thin.
Thin.
Thin, yep. And so it's created some delays, that, but only recently with regard to the school. And, but we've been in contact with the school officials, and they are just as anxious as we are to get that school opened. But I would inject, at this moment in time, though, the delays that have been so frustrating for the city council, the mayor, and residents of this community have not resulted in the format of delays. There have been issues aside from that, and we can easily document them for anybody who cares to research it. For three months, we couldn't find the sewer connection. I know you're all keenly aware of that. So I take respectful umbrance at any insinuation that the city council, the city administration, but particularly the mayor has done anything to delay the opening of that. And in personal defense, as a matter of public record, let me even make it clear that I have spent more time out knocking on doors, soliciting children who would attend that preschool than any other individual in the entire city of Bader. And I have the facts to back that up, if you care to research. And plus, I've worked with the superintendent of the school district and the principal of the high school in the process as well. So rather than coming off any more frustrated than that, I'll stand on my own record.
So basically then, just quickly, the school is on track now, hopefully with, with this gentleman?
Right, we've cleared some hurdles that happened in the last day with our building official, because that's the primary right now, is the principal glitch.
Okay. One of the questions I had to ask was, what is the building official's job description?
Yeah, he's the official who, when we get a permit, there are certain requirements that each permit has, they're case-specific. But he will go out and he will do the inspections. And he'll require, he'll do the research necessary to ensure that we've got the proper inspection for whatever project.
Okay, and then this is to make him code? Can I clarify?
Yes, please.
His job as a building official is to review plans for permits that are, that are applied for. He reviews the plans for code regulations. And then, once the plans are up to code, he approves those. Then he also provides the inspection to make sure that the work that was done was done to the code, to the plans. That's his main responsibility. He also provides the expertise needed for code enforcement.
That's recent.
Well, that's always been in, that's always been part of his purview. What we are talking about having him do more of is to take away the letter-writing, the typing, and the organizing of the information. Take that away from me and give that to him and let him do that. He's already been the one reviewing all of the code enforcement and determining whether their, whether a code has been violated or not. That's always been his, his responsibility. But he will, as council has discussed, wanting him to take over doing my portion of it, which was the administrative end, which was typing up the letters, putting all the pictures together, working with the attorney to get all the documentation correct. That he will take over as well as part of his code enforcement.
And he's performing those services at a reduced rate?
At a reduced rate, he's dropped it down to fifty dollars an hour instead of eighty.
Right. So, does that clear things up a bit?
It is, so. If I come in and get a building permit and go through the process and everything, then it will be his name that is signed underneath, building official, not Jill's?
Exactly.
Okay.
Yep, that is as it currently stands.
Well, I have been signing the permits because he's not in the office. He sends the approval over, and then I, I document his email in their account, then I actually provide the written signature. But we can have him provide all the written signatures, that just might delay things a little bit, but that's fine. Well, it says building official on that little line, that was just my question. And I don't know, as a permit purchaser, I like the idea of the guy that's going to sure. To do it, actually be in charge of this, since we're paying him the money to do it. I think he should be the one to, I realize scanning it or however you get it to, it may be a day's process or something, but that's fine. And what is his location? He's in, we see here Tomwater, I'm trying to remember. He was in one and then moved to the other. He's north.
Maybe he's in the office.
No, they're on either side of Olympia. So is this fifty dollars an hour that he's going to get, then include his travel time to go down there? No, his travel time is separate. All that stuff? All that stuff is to remain the same as it's always been. And that's the only change, is the hourly rate for code enforcement, he's dropping it to fifty dollars an hour. So will we be considering looking into other?
That's what I was.
Oh, the essentials?
Yes.
I think Jason, at last summer or something, wanted to see a list of other ones available or something. I remember hearing when I was out there. Just looking to see if there was anybody else available.
Yeah, we've done that before, and we've discovered that it's one thing to want.
And we were, we were watching closely when Winlock was looking for theirs too, and they ended up going with the same person that we got. That we have.
Right. So it's easy to say, well, try and find somebody that's a little more challenging to do, but it doesn't mean we shouldn't try.
Right, I'm just thinking of travel and hourly rate and.
If we extend this contract, correct me if I'm wrong, we're stating this, but there isn't any verbiage in there that would preclude us from hiring another person. Kind of, it's not at will.
It's not an exclusive contract, we could hire another building official anytime.
We're monitoring it closely, but up until about two weeks ago, it was kind of frustrating. But now it's getting beyond frustrating, so stay tuned. But if he responds like he did with our last competition, it may be okay. But we'll see.
So if there's no, no ability to go backwards on this, we need, we need a building inspector or something. I don't see any reason for us to not approve this resolution. So I make a motion to approve resolution two thousand eighteen oh one, authorizing the mayor to execute the building official contract extension with Townsend and Associates, as written.
Thank you.
Is it two thousand eighteen oh one or two thousand one?
It's oh one, two thousand eighteen, it's supposed to be the resolution. I don't know what I have written in there, but it should say oh one, two thousand eighteen for the resolution.
It's on this, but it's not on this. I think you read it off of this one.
I'm sorry, yes.
Yeah, I read that.
But, but I know what you mean, I'll write it down correctly.
All right. So you heard the motion submitted by Mr. Daly to approve resolution zero one twenty eighteen, authorizing the mayor to execute the building official contract extension with Townsend and Associates, as written. Do we have a second?
I'll second that.
Seconded by Mr. Parsons. Do we have any additional thoughts or commentary? Do we have an individual who'd like to say something, from the council here to here?
I'm good. I have a question. It seems like the Cassrock School District sent out an engineering report on the sewer. Did you, Mr. Mayor, did you see this report?
Sewer report?
Yeah, some kind of an engineering report on, on the sewer. Did you receive that?
I've not seen.
Because what, what I understand was that the clerk received it and sent it up to Tomwater, Olympia, wherever.
Did you have received it?
I'm not sure what engineering report you're talking about. We have received documents from the Cassrock School District regarding the plans, like the site plans and things like that, but I'm not sure that I would necessarily call that an engineering report. The engineers created some kind of site plan with some of the documentation needed for permitting, but they have not provided all of the information yet. And typically, no, the mayor does not receive that, it goes straight up to the building.
I didn't know if he had seen it or not, or wasn't aware of it or anything.
That information was forwarded to the building official, to the city planner, and also to the city engineer.
Okay.
Right.
And they've all reviewed it.
Yeah, and I did see those on my desk yesterday and today. And that's part of what we're responding with our building official. He's plugged in now, and he's responding with some urgency.
We need to finish the vote.
So with that, any other thoughts? Hearing none, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Are there any opposed? Excellent, thank you very much.
I have a question, my understanding was that the preschool has been going on at the Assembly of God Church. Is that not the case?
That's true.
That's, okay, so the preschool is running, you want to donate your supplies, take it over to the Assembly of God. That's where they're running the preschool right now.
No, no, that ain't what happened.
I'm just telling you.
Well, I wish you'd mentioned that a little earlier. I knew that was going to happen, but I had not been plugged into that, because that was just for the holidays. Thank you for bringing that to our attention.
And yet, yes, I am aware that the preschool is running at the Assembly of God Church.
Okay, thank you. But that's important to know, that they have enough students to actually open and engage in that project, so thank you. With that, let's proceed with item number four. Council to discuss the status of the wastewater treatment facility upgrade. Item A, or I think we should begin that conversation. This is an important element of our council meeting this evening. I would inform the council that the Department of Ecology has officially approved our city waste facility plan. So that's a significant development. And what we need to do tonight is to adopt it.
Nope.
Well, we're going to adopt it at the next meeting.
Yes, we're going to adopt it, and we want to adopt it at the next meeting.
Review, review, and review today.
And so I would point that out.
You have another copy of that schedule? I have copies of what the mayor's going to discuss here for the public, if you want it.
And you'll see that you've got a schedule, a design schedule for page one. And we got this from Kathy Reed from Washington State Department of Commerce, who's guiding us through this process. So, it is great players, I think.
The idea with, I'm sorry, is it okay if I chair a little bit? The idea with this is to help guide us through to the next phase. So this, after adoption of the plan, then we got to go into design, where we have an engineering firm actually design, actually draw the actual plans of what's going to be done. The first phase of our plan is to upgrade the lagoons. We're not going to move the outfall, do anything with wetlands or the outfall at all at this point. It's just going to be upgrading the lagoons, getting those to run as smooth and as good as possible as is listed in the plan. So the design needs to happen. The timing with the funding sources for the design, or excuse me, for the construction required a really tight schedule for the engineers to get a lot of designing done before this coming fall. Because this coming fall is when we have to apply for construction funds. If we do not apply for the construction funds this fall for the Department of Ecology, then we have to wait a whole year. And we don't want to have to lose a year. So the idea is to try and get all this design stuff done with the engineers by this fall, so that we can get our application in and get approval for our funding. That's our biggest next hurdle. Is, and then once we get to that point, there will be more funding to look for, smaller funding sources, but that's going to be our main funding source, so it's really key. And we don't want to lose a year's time to get this design done, or at least almost all done by the fall when we have to apply. And so what you're going to see is a real push with, with the design phase. We knew this was going to be a tight schedule, and so when we were hiring back previously, when we were hiring for this facility plan update, we included the possibility of using the same engineer, engineering firm who did this facility plan update to also do the design. We included that in the advertisement and in all the regulations required by the Department of Ecology, so that if council was happy with this engineering firm, that we could just go ahead and, and do a contract, just based on your guys' say-so. If council says yes, we like them, let's go ahead and move forward. So that's what we're looking for tonight, is council's approval to move forward with doing a contract for these same engineers to actually design the facility.
Well, I think it would be silly to change right in the middle of it, since these guys did all the design work and.
And they're doing a good job.
Yeah.
So it would require a motion saying that you want us to go ahead and move forward with contract negotiations. Then, if that's the case, then at the next council meeting, we would hopefully have a contract ready for you to review and approve, so that they could get started and officially.
So I'll make a motion for the mayor to move forward with getting a contract with Civil West to, for design of the lagoon improvements.
Okay, and maybe have it ready for a next council meeting?
And have it ready for our next council meeting.
Heard the motion submitted by Mr. Parsons to authorize the mayor to enter a contract with Civil West Engineering and have that contract ready for council action and consideration at our next city council meeting. Do we have a second for that motion?
I'll second that.
Seconded by Mr. Daly. Any other thoughts, comments, observations? Hearing none, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Are there any opposed? She was carried. And let me commend the council and city clerk, who's worked closely in the past week and a half with a meeting with the Department of Ecology and Washington State Department of Commerce Department to facilitate this rapid, expeditious action.
Can I explain a little bit about this paperwork, so they know what it is? So you see the first page I gave you, front and back, that's the, that's the schedule that Kathy Reed from the Department of Commerce herself has put together as far as what needs to happen. What you have here, the next part is, I think, six pages, and this is from Civil West. And what they did was prepare a. what they did was prepare a very preliminary, a preliminary scope of work of what might be included in their contract for design, should you guys approve him, approve them, which you approved this contract negotiation. So this is just to give you an idea of what they're, how they're anticipating to do the work, and you can kind of check it against the schedule and see how they're working together with that. This is, was an attempt to give you a little bit more information about what Civil West's plan would be for the design, what it would look like, what kind of stuff they have to do in order to complete it, and to kind of give you a chance to have more time to review the scope of work, which is really the critical part of the contract. So again, this is a preliminary version of that, but it at least can give you an idea and give you a little bit of time to look through some of this stuff, because sometimes we don't, we only have a couple of days to look at the contract. I want to give you guys as much time as possible to look at what, what they're going to be proposing for the most part in the contract, so this should get you going on it, give you some time to look through it. I see a question.
Obviously money. Where does the $600,000 come in?
This is funding that we've already been approved for. We have it, we just, we were about $86,000 short from, of the money that we have, and so we did get, well, it's not an extension, we got a second loan approved, yeah, yeah, to cover that, so, but yes, we have it through Department of Ecology, it is half loan, half grant, so half of it will have to be paid back, but half of it will not.
With that, thank you for that action. Now, we have one, the name of item on our agenda, and that's a discussion regarding the May Day celebration, so we're doing that over here.
As everyone knows, we missed May Day last year, so we're going to make it bigger and better this year. There's a few of us on the committee, there's about eight or nine people this year coming together. Right now, we've kind of got a little stumbling block with our remodel on A Street, but we'll work through all of those motions. My question tonight is, is I was curious if council would be interested in giving us a little seed money, because we have no money. Now, everyone is going, our budget is really tight, but I did go over the budget, and I thought of some money that hasn't been earmarked for absolutely anything. And that is, for two weeks, we did not have our deputy clerk. And that was approximately $400 a week, so that would be like, so the smallest amount would help, whether that would be $400, we wouldn't be asking for a lot. And I was wondering if my fellow council people would think about it until the next meeting, and then maybe we could discuss it, or maybe you would have an opinion on it.
I have an opinion, but I shared my opinion during the budget time, and if we've got any extra money, I say it goes into attorney fees and making the town better.
Can we give money to a non-city sanctioned, it's not sanctioned, but.
Well, we do Fourth of July.
But, right, that is, but that's a city, that's a city.
Yeah, it is.
Yeah, council decides a thing.
So there would be more than one step?
I think there is a way to, yeah, I don't know how, what it's going to, that has to happen, but yeah.
If we decide for a lot of money, something, then the city council decides that.
As long as it can be done.
I think so, yeah, I don't think there's any reason why. I know we have money allotted in this past for paying for like the insurance for those activities and things, so I don't see why, yeah, I'm sure there's a way to do it.
Look at that, that's council action at the time, independent, per council, to the council.
Very good thought, that's outside the box, I like that. I couldn't believe it, because I was pretty impressed with how outside the box you got there, that was good.
Well, we don't have any funds whatsoever, and any little bit would help. Next year.
And it's for the whole town, it's, I mean, this is something, just like code enforcement, it is for the whole town, and this is for the kids too, just like Fourth of July, it's for the kids, so.
It's a full family venture.
One thought that occurred to me, when we spoke about that some time ago, that there was some thought about shifting it from the weather challenged May 1st time period to Memorial Day in May, has that been abandoned?
That's been abandoned.
It's been the first day, the first Saturday of May for, I don't know.
Oh, yeah.
I'm just hanging with all these full-time residents who've lived through their whole lives and just going with the flow, I'm not going to. But next year, they're planning to promote themselves, sell things prior to, so they'll have their own money for May Day adventures.
It used to be funded by the selling of buttons.
Of the buttons.
When we had the school, when the kids would go around and sell buttons, and that really funded the whole May Day.
And so with the school up there, that's little people, and wonderful.
But we don't have the school.
But we don't have.
To generate the kids that would want to be May Day, Vader May Dayers.
And it's little people, so that the school would be, would be perfect next year.
But we're getting closer now that we have the preschool, it used to be like sixth graders and stuff.
Why couldn't they still do it, just because they go to a different school, why couldn't they sell their buttons?
Right?
I don't know, I'm just saying, I mean, I'm just thinking.
Three different.
I have, what?
No, I was just like, you have a button maker?
I've got two of them.
But anyway, so that's, that's kind of our thought.
We do have a.
Anybody that wants to come in?
Yes, you're welcome, you're welcome to come to the meetings. When are they? There'll be another one tomorrow at one o'clock at my house. And if my, and if my house starts getting crowded, we're going to go to the community center, and I will let everybody know at that point, because it's more room and bigger tables and et cetera.
Would the council care to hear a comment from the phone?
I, okay, I understand about the button thing for the May Day, and you guys are all concerned about, well, there's no school, but there's the possibility of this preschool, once there is a preschool here, then it's a school.
There is a preschool here, it's just.
Now, to think outside the box again, longly sells buttons, Mr. Parsons, said that you have two button makers. Well, guess what? Do it a couple months in advance, run it for buttons for May Day, you can do buttons for Fourth of July. More than one entity, and it funds.
Businesses are down to have a little button for buttons.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Two businesses.
Button bucket.
As far as the students going to schools, and high school, middle schools, and elementary schools, they go to three different school districts, so it's challenging, but.
It is challenging.
We could probably identify.
But then again, look at all those people they'll get to reach in all the different communities that they could sell to. Come on. They're reaching out, I mean, you don't have to just live in Vader to enjoy a May Day, right?
We support.
Right, sure.
There's a lot of neighborly community involvement.
I think you're going to sell a lot more buttons.
At some point down the road, I think the city ought to consider, like other communities, make it float and enter it in.
Absolutely.
Absolutely.
Absolutely, most definitely.
But, you know, most places have like a king and queen, or some reason to have a float, so what's just have gone by the wayside because of the school, but it's something that we're trying to build back.
Throw the idea out there, maybe generate some interest. Okay, well, then, have you exhausted the topic?
I have, I will wait till our next meeting, and maybe we can.
Oh, there's a meeting tomorrow.
Yes, meeting tomorrow at one o'clock.
One o'clock.
I would like to know if the council has figured out yet how you're going to pay the sewer fund back.
There is a plan in place.
What is that plan?
Well, we're still in legal action involving the property that is the target of the action, so it has not been abandoned or forgotten about, it's still, it's like the exhaustive process. So that would be my answer, unless council wants to expand on that. Okay, not particularly applicable to the May Day subject matter, so forgive me for having responded to it. It does, yeah. Be an excellent question for public comment, but we wouldn't answer them either. But I'd be more than happy to talk to you about it afterward, or come in and talk to our city clerk.
Isn't that public information?
Yeah, but we can't comment during public.
So there's an official agenda, and the council has to stay focused on that official agenda. It's been approved for public discussion, that's how it works, so.
So why do we need to do the little three-minute thing?
You can bring your attention to, pardon me for trying to respond, and outside the bounds of the agenda. I'd invite you to come talk to them, or the city clerk.
Never mind, never mind, if it's that big of a problem, I'll ask in another public meeting.
It's only a big a problem if we want to know. So with that having been said, any other comments on the agenda item? Hearing none, we will officially adjourn the city council meeting at 7:01.